The Monday, March tenth, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting of the Paris City Council is hereby called to order at five thirty P. M. For the purpose of this meeting, there is a quorum of the council present. Agenda item number two, invocation. Mr. Gene Anderson will deliver the invocation, followed by the United States pledge and Texas pledge, which will be led by council. Please rise.
May we pray. Heavenly Father, again, we thank you for each and every blessing, for your watch care over us each day, your divine intervention, Father, to keep us safe and to help us, Father, to be positive and make progress, Father, in making our city a better place to live. We pray for our council tonight as they make decisions that you guide and direct them in everything. We pray your blessings upon our nation. We ask all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Land allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. A pledge of allegiance to the Texas state under God, one indivisible.
Agenda item number four, citizens forum. Persons desiring to address the council must limit the presentation in no more than two minutes. Unless an item is posted on the agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits a council from responding to any comments other than to refer, refer the matter to a future agenda, to an existing policy, or a staff person with specific factual information. Claims against the city, council members, or employees, as well as individual personal appeals, are not appropriate for citizens forum. If necessary, the city council may convene into executive session under chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code regarding any item on this agenda. The public forum is now open. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Just that one. Ain't that how that worked out? I was having a twenty-four nineteen Bonham Street. Bear with me, I'm having some stuff, medicine ain't working that well. Uh, over the course of my time talking to my city council for years has, uh, I have, I have had arguments. Uh, and my city has tried to make my life more difficult in a retaliation situation. Recently, I want to say thank you for everything that you do. We, we don't agree on some things, but recently my city no longer attacked me. They helped me, and I am grateful for it. I am overly enjoyed by what they were able to do for me instead of trying to make my life harder. I would like to further discuss some things with you when I get this stuff figured out and I can actually hold down a conversation. Uh, but I just wanted to say with the phone call, I had him go back and start talking to people I didn't even know to talk to, to try to get a situation resolved so that we didn't put another person on the streets in Paris, Texas. And it's being resolved, and I just cannot begin to express how grateful I am to my city working with me instead of against me. This is new and refreshing, and I'm thankful for it. That's, that's, that's all I had. Thank, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Atwood.
Hello, I wanted to introduce myself. I'm Judy Resner, an architect specializes in preservation and commercial architecture. I've been here all day, meeting with your wonderful city manager and mayor and Ms. Harris and code officials and planning departments. And we feel like we have a great idea of how to move forward with the First National Bank, uh, with Rogers Wade and Varner. So I think we've all come to agreement of how we want to proceed with getting your approvals and a plan of action together. So I just wanted to introduce myself and tell you I'm really excited to be a part of this new chapter. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yes, hello, my name is Lisa McCarion, I live at eleven fifty Pine Bluff Street. I was the executive director of the Paris, Texas Film Office in two thousand and nineteen. It didn't get off the ground. A couple of days ago, and I did try to get film guidelines passed, um, which were never passed. Um, a couple of days ago, I was contacted by, um, the ad agency for Hyundai. They would like to do two national commercials here in Paris, Texas, uh, with the film, with the theme of Paris, a French cowboy here. Um, awesome, it's about their hybrid cars, best of both worlds, electric and gas. But I believe we still don't have guidelines, so I have brought the guidelines again. This is my third time trying. I feel like everything in its timing, maybe it is finally time for Paris to become a Texas film-friendly community, which I've done all the legwork for. All we have to do is pass guidelines. They want to film the first, the first two weeks, somewhere in the first two weeks of, um, April. They'll need five days total with three days of filming and, you know, there's a forward support for a day, and then there's the cleanup for a day, but the filming would take place for about three days. Um, my hope is that we could pass interim set of guidelines, something that is workable, so we can take advantage of this opportunity. And then, um, and then sit down and really look at all of the details very closely. A lot of what's in the guidelines won't even apply to them. Um, but if we could do this, I think it'd be a feather in our cap and really cool to have a national commercial with Paris, Texas featured. And, um, I would like to help in any way possible and to facilitate this. And I have a copy of the guidelines for each of you that I can give, and I appreciate your time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hand them up.
Ms. Allison.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? If not, we will go ahead and close the public forum. The consent agenda. Consent agenda, items on the consent agenda are approved, are approved by a single action of the council. With such approval, applicable to all items appearing on the consent agenda, a council member may request any item to be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Does any member wish to remove an item from the agenda for discussion?
Make motion, we approve consent agenda.
There is a motion. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, those opposed say no. Motion carries four zero. Moving on to the regular agenda, agenda item number eight, receipt presentation from the police department on the racial profiling annual report. Staff, do you have a presentation?
So, good evening, uh, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. I would like to introduce Dr. Uh, Dr. Fritz. Each year he has come to the council and presented our racial profiling report, that's due every year. Uh, it's due to T. Cole every year, which is our, the state governing body standards body for peace officers. They license all the peace officers in the state and they regulate our training standards and our hiring standards. So each year the department collects data, demographic data on all traffic stops conducted in the city by Paris Police Department. And, um, that data is collected throughout the year, and then this law requires a comparative analysis be performed at the end of each year on all of that data. And then the, the law stipulates exactly what comparisons need to be made on this comparative analysis. So, uh, the department, we don't do that, we contract with Dr. Fritz, and then, and then his firm prepares, we give him the data, they prepare the report. Uh, they present that report to, to you guys, to council, and then, uh, we've already submitted our report to the state. So with that, I'll introduce Dr. Fritz, turn it over, Dr. Fritz.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me. I'm gonna present your most recent, uh, annual racial profiling report. As Chief mentioned, this is based on calendar year two thousand and twenty-four traffic stops. So every time a traffic stop is conducted, uh, each officer collects demographic information and other information, such as the reason for the stop and whether searches occurred, et cetera. There's about fifteen items that are collected on each traffic stop. We receive that, uh, data, we, uh, do an analysis, prepare a report. That report sent to the, uh, chief, and then they report, uh, the data to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. So, we're kind of walking through the process of what we do in, uh, our analysis, and then also talk about the data and the analysis we perform on that. First thing we do is we make sure that the, the city is in compliance with, uh, the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure. In the Texas Code of Criminal Procedures, what is commonly referred to as the Texas Racial Profiling Law. And in that, uh, each police department must meet certain guidelines, and we make sure that those guidelines are met. One such thing is a policy prohibiting racial profiling. Obviously, the collection of data, uh, all officers must be trained according to T. Cole standards, et cetera. And the Paris Police Department's in full compliance with the law. What we spend most of our time on is the data analysis. As Chief mentioned, our Texas Code of Criminal Procedure specifies the comparative analysis that needs to be conducted on the data. So they lay out the analysis that needs to be performed, and then our Texas Commission on Law Enforcement also has some involvement regarding the reporting requirements. And so this is your two thousand and twenty-four, uh, traffic stop data. The first comparative analysis is basically just a breakdown of your stops by race or ethnicity. And in two thousand and twenty-four, you basically, you had close, a little over forty-five hundred traffic stops. T. Cole, the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, uh, then requires jurisdictions to compare their data, broken down by race, ethnicity, to their city and their county population. And that's what is presented here, uh, compares your stops. For example, sixty-one point three five percent of your stops in two thousand and twenty-four were white motorists, whereas your city population is comprised of fifty-six point six percent white residents, seventy point seven, uh, percent white residents in the county, et cetera. We don't, uh, we, we put a significant amount of, uh, disclaimers basically in the report regarding the stop data, uh, because it's not, there's not any accurate interpretation of what we can, um, basically glean from that data. It's largely due to two reasons. Uh, one, census data isn't an accurate indicator of your driving population, so we don't have an adequate benchmark. Um, even larger than that now is that we collect in this state on each traffic stop, whether the officer knew the race or ethnicity of the person prior to the stop. And in two thousand and twenty-four, that percentage in, uh, Paris was one point one percent, which really aligns with, um, state average. I, uh, in the report, I use a study that was done, um, now several years ago, and it was two point nine percent of the stops in the state of Texas. Uh, the officer knew the race ethnicity prior to the stop. I pulled two thousand and twenty-three data, two thousand and twenty-four is not available yet because we're still working on, uh, on that data. But in two thousand and twenty-three, uh, city police departments, about seven hun- uh, close to eight hundred, seven hundred and seventy-six reporting agencies, two T. Cole, about four point six million traffic stops, the statewide average. On what percentage of the time did an officer in the state of Texas know the race ethnicity, it was three point eight percent. So usually we see something similar, and that's what we've seen in Paris, but the problem is, is that then we don't have an accurate benchmark, and in reality, prior to the stop, the officer doesn't know the race ethnicity. So what we spend most of our time on is looking at what we refer to as post-stop outcomes. So after the officer has contacted the motorist and obviously has identified the person's race or ethnicity. And that's what's presented in the next two comparative analyses, is the second one that needs to be performed, basically breaks down the initial outcome of each stop. And for each stop, one of four things is going to occur. Person's gonna receive a warning, broken down into either a verbal or a written warning. They're gonna receive a citation, or they're going to be arrested. And so as, uh, just kind of overall, uh, we, we typically lump warnings together, verbal and written, because it's basically the same outcome. Broken down here on the, on, on this slide though, but over eighty percent of your traffic stops resulted in a warning overall in two thousand and twenty-four. This is now broken down by, by specific outcome and by the race, ethnicity of the motorists, and basically their column percentages. So of the white motorists that were stopped, sixty-nine percent received a verbal warning. Of the black motorists that were stopped, fifty-nine percent received a verbal warning. And of the Hispanic motorists that were stopped, sixty-eight percent received a verbal warning. What we're looking for in this analysis is basically consistency across, um, racial, um, ethnic groups for the warnings and the citations. And then arrests, there's usually more variability, but regarding arrests, we know the reason for the arrest. And over sixty percent of the time in two thousand and twenty-four, the reason for the arrest was an outstanding warrant, which then leads to the disparity in results you see on arrests. And then thirty-seven percent were a violation of P. N. Co., which basically mean there was a violation of the criminal law that led to the arrest.
Can I, can I ask a question on that slide?
Of course.
Um, is that the reason for where, arrest, sixty-two percent arrest based on outstanding warrants, so you saying the minorities are more likely to have the outstanding warrants?
They're, they're more likely to be arrested.
Because that's, yeah, yeah. Because of outstanding warrants or something, because I see the, the numbers go higher on minorities when you get down to verbal warnings, written warnings, citations, arrests, compared to the demographic one you showed earlier.
I mean, I, I, well, regarding, regarding citations, you know, a ten percent to thirteen percent, a three percentage point differential is not, in, in our perspective, a mean, a significant difference, um, between those, those groups. I would say there's, there's consistency there. Uh, we do expect differences in arrests, and that's what, that's what we see there. And so it's not so much because we don't know who all has arrest warrants, but of those that were, it is accurate to say that of those arrested in two thousand and twenty-four, uh, black motorists were more likely to have arrest warrants.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about the difference in, I think with whites, there were what, sixty-nine percent or whatever that stopped, that were stopped, or something like that, I can't remember. Yeah, it was a previous slide.
Yeah, so when you, when you. Stop data.
Yeah, so you got sixty-nine percent of the stops were.
Atwood.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, fifty-six in the city, fifty-six percent, twenty-three percent were black, eleven point eight percent were Hispanic. But then when you go to the citations and arrests, it's lower percentage of the whites get citations or arrests.
Right, but this, this is, this is, the, the row you just read is your population, so fifty-six percent of your population is white?
I meant stop, yeah, sixty-one to twenty-eight to ten.
Percent.
So it's even greater.
Well, it's not, because what this is, this is a row percentage. So it's just taking your total stops of forty-five hundred and twelve and dividing this, these num- oh, missed it. Previous. Dividing those numbers. So twenty-seven hundred and sixty-eight divided by four hundred, forty-five hundred and twelve is the percentage of stops, um, white motorists who were stopped.
Yes, I know.
So it's a row.
Right.
All these rest, they're column, they can't be compared, they're column percentages. So if you look at like the table two in there, it's, it's a different analysis that's being performed, because we want to look at inaction similarities. So of those, what percentage of white motors, black motors, and Hispanic motors received warnings? What percentage received citations? So it's a column percentage, so it can't be, can't be compared to the stop percentages.
Yeah, I, I know what you're saying, but I mean, if you, if you did it to a point where you said, out of all those numbers on that other slide, how many received something? I don't care if it's a verbal warning, written warning, citation, or arrest, you know, in that demographic, what is the percentage? That's, that's something I'd like to see, but, uh.
I'm not quite sure, that is what this is. This tells you the breakdown, so if, if in black mo- for black motorists, fifty-nine percent received a verbal warning, nineteen percent received a written warning, twelve percent received a citation, ten percent were arrested.
Yes. Okay, I see what you're saying. Uh, yeah, I see what you're saying.
So it's there.
Yeah, yeah, I got you, I got you, I'm following you now.
Okay. The, uh, next comparative analysis that's done is the, is on search data, so that's a, a segment of arrests. So fifteen percent of your stops in two thousand and twenty-four also included a search, so the other eighty-five percent did not. So then we do an analysis on those six hundred and sixty-four searches, and we're able to get more detail on the searches because we know the, the type of searches that were performed. So it's the search percentage there, that's the column percentage. So of the white motorists that were stopped, thirteen percent were searched. Of the black motors that were stopped, twenty percent were searched. And of the Hispanic motorists that were stopped, thirteen percent were searched. We are, we do know the reason for the search, the two most common reason for searches in two thousand and twenty-four were consent searches with forty-two percent and probable cause searches. So that basically means that the officer had articulate facts to believe that there was evidence connected to a crime inside the vehicle and therefore searched the vehicle, and that's at thirty-five percent. We do a separate analysis on, uh, for consent searches, uh, two hundred and eighty of the six hundred and sixty-four searches were based on consent. That's largely because consent searches are considered discretionary, because they're asking the motorists permission to search, so we separate those out. That mean, overall, of your forty-five hundred traffic stops, six point two percent of them resulted in a consent search. The last thing we do is we look at the contraband discovery, what's typically known as the hit rate, that of these searches do the police, um, find evidence? And in forty-seven percent of the searches, um, they did in two thousand and twenty-four, that is actually, uh, the exact same as the state average. So the officers are successful when they do searches in finding a contraband or other evidence. Most of the time that contraband is drugs, fifty-nine percent of the time. The last analysis we do is, we're supposed to look at the complaints and assess the complaints and the outcomes of the complaints. But in two thousand and twenty-four, Paris Police Department did not receive any complaints alleging that a peace officer employed by the agency engaged in racial profiling. That's the analysis that we perform, I'm happy to answer, any questions?
So any, any particular questions or any discussion? I think we're good.
I think the last slide answered my last question. I was just gonna say that this report does not stipulate the racial profiling does not happen, but that last slide clarified that, there was no, no cases, no, no complaints.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All right.
Fantastic. Thank you, sir.
You bet.
All right, moving on to agenda number nine, discuss an act on a resolution approving an amendment to a tax abatement agreement with American Spiral Weld Pipe Company, LLC, dated September twenty-fourth of two thousand and eighteen. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Ms. Hammond's gonna help me on this. Uh, this is regarding the American Spiral Weld, um, tax abatement. This is regarding the American Spiral Weld tax abatement agreement that we entered into in 2013. That's, all right, is it right?
2020.
2018, I think, is when we entered into the agreement. And the amendment has to do with the start date of the abatement period. Their completion date was delayed by COVID-19 and the supply chain issues that occurred during that period of time. And I'm going to let Ms. Hammond address it.
Thank you. Stephanie Maureen Hammond, Executive Director of the EDC, Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tim Council. Thank you for having me. As part, as Stephanie mentioned, American Spiral Weld was announced in 2018. And as part of their incentive package, they were offered a seven-year de-escalating tax abatement. The start date was 2020 with an end date of 2026. And that aligned with the projected completion date for the building in 2020. Stephanie mentioned, like so many others, they experienced supply chain challenges, which delayed the completion of their building to 2021. So the amendment extends it to 2027, which honors the original intent of the agreement instead of cutting them and penalizing them for that year that they lost due to the pandemic. I thought it was important, too, to let you know what the announcement and the initial projections were and where we are today. So in that announcement in 2018, they projected up to 100 new jobs to the community and a capital investment of $90 million. Fast forward to today, they are employing 150 people in this community. Those jobs are all well above the county average of 50,000, have benefits, they have a wonderful corporate culture. And so they have exceeded all of our expectations. And for all of those reasons, we respectfully request and support the amendment being proposed tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions related to the company.
I'll add that the company applied for their tax abatement and received it in 2021. And LCAD has been treating that as if it was the first year of abatement. So this amendment would just conform to what LCAD, the way LCAD's been treating the agreement.
Which would be a 25%.
Yes.
For this last year.
Yes, and in terms of revenue, because in that seventh year, it goes down to 25%. I don't think it's a significant loss of revenue compared to what their tax burden is.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Are there any questions, any discussion on this item? No. I just want to, I'll quickly add something. American Spiral Weld has been an amazing company in our community. And we're glad, we're sure glad that they're here and they've invested their dollars here. We want to see that company thrive and continue for decades to come. If we don't have any further discussion, I'll hear a motion. We got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed say no. Motion carries 4-0. Agenda item number 10. Discuss and possibly act on amendment to procedures for appointing members to boards and commissions. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, as you all know, that for the last four years, you've been appointing board members based on the point system. Staff prepares a ballot. You all rate the candidates or the applicants based on points. And then we go in another room and tally those and bring them back to you. After the last meeting, I've had several council members say, why don't we go back to what we used to do? Which is what most Texas cities do. And that is that the mayor opens the floor for nominations. And a council member makes a nomination. And then the mayor gets all nominations. And then he starts asking for a vote based on who was nominated first. Just because you're nominated first doesn't mean you're going to get appointed to the board. Depends on how everyone votes. So we're just bringing this forward to see what you all want to do.
I'll go ahead and open up the floor for discussion.
I kind of like the current system that we've had. It seems like everyone gets full input. In the past, I think that's sometimes been an issue with the first person nominating always getting the nod in, which kind of goes against everyone's input, maybe sometimes.
I agree with Rudy. I know it's difficult when you're in the back room tallying up all the numbers. I know that's hard, but it appears to be the more fair way.
Mayor Pro-Tim Savage.
Well, I'm good either way. Actually, I don't know. I see flaws in both ways. I can understand that the first person seems to get the nod. But I also see flaws in that point system. You know, we came back with a couple of errors, and then we had to go back and change things. So I guess if I headed my way, I would want to do the nomination system.
One suggestion is maybe on the night of all of the tally of the numbers, that that's not announced. Maybe we take the stress off the counter and announce it at the next council meeting.
I think that's a great idea.
Because that's a lot of stress with people waiting on you and...
Absolutely.
Well, also for you all, too, if you think about, because we're not perfect. None of us are.
Right.
So we're going to, there may be an overlap. We may have two people that tied, then we have to come back out. You're already moving forward with the next one. It's a very confusing night for everybody.
Absolutely.
So wouldn't that pose a problem? If we come back, if we wait and come back the next, in a couple of weeks, then we'll still have people that signed up for two or three different positions that you'll announce, hey, they got this one. Now we got to consider this person for the next...
We would still have to bring that forward. Yes, we would still, it would come in handy as if that night, as far as going, if we didn't tally him up that night, we would still have to bring it forward and finish up. But we couldn't finish up because there's an overlap on the boards.
Or is there a way that we can conduct the votes? If we were to stay with that process, conduct the votes or the tallying process, and then not vote on it until the very end and then vote on it one by one or as a collective whole?
Not following.
So usually, I believe what the criteria has been is we'll go board by board.
Yes.
But if for some reason there is some sort of overlap or some sort of confusion, because I know this last time, there was a lot of, there were a lot of folks that had multi, applied multiple times for certain things. And so I think that that can get really confusing, especially for us. We're sitting here, which, do we strike that individual off because they've been appointed somewhere else? I think that, and once we do all that, once we get the tally and then we come back, we, I think we go ahead and vote on them at that time. Maybe we wait till the end.
And part of us are moving on. You know, last year, we had two teams going. And so we had one person out here telling you, we can go on to the next one because there's only two. You can do this, or we can do that. What are your thoughts about saying if you're interested in serving on a board, select two instead of four? And then, you know, if we don't fill the boards, what we've done in the past is call the people who were left and ask if they'd like to serve on another board.
Right, do a scramble.
Mm-hmm. Thoughts?
Sounds good. It's a good option. I really like that.
I think that's better.
Okay. I think that would cut down.
I'll just say, I think being on the, being on the application side of things, before I was on council, I know that it was tough both ways because I was, whenever you've got that first round of, hey, like, I want this individual to serve on this board, that became difficult. And then also, on the other side, it was difficult because you're having to wait. But I kind of like the fact that, you know, if you have someone that's a little bit more reserved on council that may not necessarily want to be able to jump out there, they may be new or, you know, they may not feel comfortable to do that. I think that this empowers them to have a good, fair vote without having any group think on it.
Yes.
But I'm with you. I kind of like both aspects. But I'm leading a little bit more on that.
There's pros and cons on both.
Right.
I think narrowing it down to have each person select two boards instead of four. And you're not trying to, you all are looking at this where there's four. Okay, we're as staff looking at four. Another option, which I didn't even list in here, is that you could have a special meeting just to deal with boards and commissions. You're not rushed.
Yeah, now I like that.
I always feel like we're rushing you.
Yeah. I like that idea. I think we kind of talked about it last time, but we didn't do it. But I like that.
And I think a brief special meeting, because I think if the process is conducted how we usually do it, it's fairly quick. I mean, it's not like we're sitting up here waiting for too long. But if we did that and had a special meeting, I feel like it would actually cut down the time of communication.
And last errors.
Right, and certify it the correct way.
What are your thoughts about doing it the Tuesday? You know, that second Monday is when it's in the policies and procedures. What are your thoughts about then on Tuesday? Or either the second Monday of the month? I'm sorry, the first Monday, the second Monday is when your regular meeting is. That's generally a lighter meeting than your fourth Monday. And June is usually pretty heavy.
Right.
We could do it on a third Monday of that month? That would be a special meeting if you all wanted to do that.
The third Monday of May?
Of June.
Of June.
Mm-hmm. I think that's fair.
Or you all could, you know, do the boards first.
Right.
It's whatever you all want to do. Do you want to have a special meeting? Stephanie wants to say something.
Well, if you're going to have a special meeting dedicated to that, and we can take our time and get that done, if you limit to two the number of boards that people can apply for, you're going to get a lot of applications for PDC and P&amp;Z. And you're going to have trouble having any applicants at all for some of those down the line. So that's a consideration.
Well, if we had a special meeting, maybe keep it to four choices on the boards.
Right, I think that would...
Because that's all we're going to be considering, you all that night. You won't have a lot of other items to consider.
Right.
Yeah, that was my point. That makes a lot more sense to do it on a special meeting and keep the number of boards that somebody can apply for.
I just got a text from staff that they also think that maybe we could utilize technology to make the process go more smooth. So I like that as well. We'd love that. If they can make it happen, it'll be great.
There's also been a lot of, a lot of questions have been asked by citizens and those that are citizens of the county also is, you know, hey, what are the boards that I could serve on if I live out in the county as opposed to the city? And the restrictions for serving? And so I think a good streamlined explanation of that, whether it be on the website or also just in normal context, I think we need to have that out there. Because there are a lot of people that want to volunteer, but they just live...
I'm actually working on something for your next meeting before we start putting out advertisements for the boards. Because there's several we know right off the bat that can do that. There's others we have questions on. We have to finish working through those.
Perfect. Okay. So we have a pretty good generalization, understanding that we would like to do a special meeting and then have the four, the top four selections of the preferences of the application, correct?
And then we vote.
And then we vote on that.
I just, I hate that we're going to make this decision with four of us here instead of the other three being here, at least two of the other three being here, to help make this decision. Because I still like the nomination process. Because I have a question on that.
Okay.
So when we, when you nominate, you don't nominate one and then vote on that person. You can nominate as many as you want and then somebody make a motion to cease the nomination. So you still, you're able to nominate four or five or whatever.
It's similar. Well, it's exactly how you all vote for mayor and mayor pro town. You open the floor, and you may have three people that, you know, and the first person doesn't get the appointments, but maybe the third and fourth do.
Right.
Yeah, I think this all came about because we had a meeting where somebody was nominated and didn't take any more nominations. And there's like, wait a minute, I want to nominate somebody, but it was already done.
That's exactly what happened in June of 2020, is when we ended up with this. Do you want to table this into the next, to the next meeting?
I'd like to.
I mean, if that's what council sees, I have no problem with tabling it. That's fine, too.
Is it going to change?
I don't know.
Is there something we don't know?
Well, there's a little different way of doing it. And it's been difficult in the past. I think we try it this way and see how it works this year. But if you want to table that.
No, we can do it.
We can always change it next year.
So stay with the current procedure. Have a special meeting, the third meeting in June. And applicants can sort of apply for four different boards. Did I get it?
The only question I have on this potential way of doing this is will there be enough time for advertisement of any, any boards that aren't filled or any spots?
Yes, we'll just, we'll start advertising straight away. And we re-advertise. And then once it aren't filled, then we turn around and accept applications again.
Good deal. And then there's, it wouldn't allow for any hindrance for starting that new position? Because I know...
No, July 1st is what you all have, the starting.
Start.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I'd say allow for enough time.
As long as it's done in June.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then we have to hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion in a second.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries 4-0.
Okay.
Very riveting there. Okay.
Okay.
We will now move on to agenda item number 11. Discuss and possibly act on revisions to policies and procedures for boards and commissions. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Okay, we're trying to get this done before April 1st. During the round of board members last summer, there's discussion about revising board policies and procedures. So we started going through them. We sent out emails in October. We've gotten back a few suggestions. And so we're bringing those forward to see if you all are good with them or want to do something different or keep doing what we're doing. And I think that probably the best thing would be vote on each individual one separately because there's probably five paragraphs that have changes. But they're short. Okay, the first one is, it makes sense. We're just going to add the tax increment and reinvestment zone board. It wasn't in there, and we have that board now. So it needs to be in there. So we can have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries 4-0.
Okay, the next one is, everything that we have is three-year appointments. With the exception, there's a few that are required by law, board of adjustment. They're two-year terms. We need to specify that in our policies. Also, we had questions about, just like having trouble getting all the boards and commissions, getting members. We are going to bring back something with a couple of the boards and commissions that allow former county involvement, not all the boards. But we've had a couple of boards, specifically Main Street and Historic Preservation Commission. And we have people that serve on it. They are passionate. I mean, they work a lot of volunteer hours not to show up for a board meeting. But they're term limited out. If they've served two, three-year terms, they can't serve again. But they still volunteer and come to the meeting. And then we can't find people to be on the board. So it makes sense if we did something similar to what you all pass for PDC. And that is to not have term limits. that is to not have term limits, however, at the end of that three-year term, or two-year term, they have to make application, and then you all have an opportunity to vote, whether or not you want to continue them on the board or not. It made sense to us, but
And it would just be for those, those two boards?
Just, no, the boards and commissions.
Oh, okay. Oh, all the way around.
Yeah. Because, and just like, one of you were talking about the county, we have the traffic commission right now, lady moved outside the city, and she wants to serve and can't. And that's one of the things we're going to bring forward to you next week, next time in two weeks.
So I have a question on that.
Okay.
If they have termed out, to say there's two spots open, and nobody applies, why can't we appoint them back?
We can if we, this policy says we can.
No, I mean, without that policy, right now.
Right now, it says we can't.
Nobody's there.
It says if you're term limited out, you can't, they don't even apply, they know.
That doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make sense.
Because if nobody's applying, then the person that's term limited out should be in
Well, they will, they will sit there, they will sit there until we find somebody. I mean, in other words, they'll keep coming. But it, it makes more sense to do this, but it's up to you all.
It's counterintuitive how, how it currently is, but this would alleviate that and make it accessible for folks to be able to continue.
I hate telling somebody that, oh, you're term limited out, you can't come back, and they love being on the board.
But, but, but the only, it's not a problem, but the only thing with that, when it comes back to council, and somebody does apply
Yes.
Other than those people, now we're saying, okay, they've been on there for six years, so we're going to put them right back on and not give another person a chance.
It puts you in a
So it should be that if nobody applies, these people should be able to just serve. We should be able to appoint
Like a holdover, or just appoint them?
I don't know, we should be able to appoint them.
Well, I don't know.
I don't know, but it seems like it makes no sense that we can't just appoint them if nobody else wants to be there.
It doesn't, you'd break a policy.
Right.
Well, but you could change your policy to say, they're allowed to reapply, but will only be reappointed if there aren't sufficient applicants.
Yeah, you could do that.
New applicants.
I like that.
Okay, that's a good idea.
It's more, more, just more fair.
Is that fresh concern?
Yes, absolutely.
So does anyone
So stay with the term, you want to stay with the term limits, but say, if, if you are term limited out, and you want to go, still serve, then the council can reappoint you if there's no other applicants.
Would you do that for, for one term, and then after that term, they can reapply again?
Yes.
See what I'm saying?
Like, if you're on the city council, and you termed out
Yes.
Can you wait one term and apply again? Is that how that works?
Yes.
That's a
Okay, so it should be the same?
Okay.
I make that motion.
Second.
Okay. All those in, oh, actually, yeah, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries four zero.
Okay, let's see. Okay, right now, we have a requirement in our policies that say you have to have, we have to have a general workshop covering the city's ethics and open government training. It's very, it's been very well, poor, it's been poor attended. And in addition to that, my office, we were actually sending a letter, and we still do, to the new board member, saying, you know, we need to come by and take your oath, you're going to have to take open government training. We give them the website, they have to require, they're required to file their certificate with us, and they have to get a copy of the ethics policy, which we give them, they sign off on it. So in addition, our boards, their board liaisons are actually having specific board training that's tailored to that board's responsibilities. That makes more sense, that for us to conduct an additional workshop, that maybe five people come out of 20. So we wanted to delete that, if you all were okay with it. They're still getting their training, they're just not coming up here. I mean, they're coming one by one, sometimes sitting down and visiting with us about it if they have questions.
Curious, how many people, truthfully, actually watch the videos and the open meetings?
Well, let me tell you, they, they all, we bug them until they do.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there's nothing that we can do, really, according to state law.
Right.
But the state does require it, they just don't come back and do anything. We really do bother them about it, because it's important.
Right.
Are you all okay with deleting that, the extra workshop?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So we got, we got a motion in a second for Ms. Norman? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries four zero.
Okay. And then the, the last one is to go ahead and put in, in the policy that the board liaison will conduct a workshop specific on the responsibilities. They're doing it anyway, and they can continue doing it, but we'd like to have it in the policy.
I'll hear a motion.
The board liaison.
They conduct a workshop, in other words, they're in that
Staff liaison, not the council liaison.
Yes, yes. Yeah, did I say board?
Say no, wait a minute.
I could see that.
I know, I know you don't believe, I'm not used to talking this much.
I'm just interested to see how the band board would want that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would, that would be interesting.
Okay.
Any more, any more discussion on that item? If not, I'll hear a motion.
So moved.
We got a motion?
Second.
Second?
Thank you all very much.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries four zero.
Don't talk again for weeks.
Moving on to agenda item number 12, discuss and appoint two council members to fill the vacant position, positions on the Paris Development Code Planning and Zoning Subcommittee. Staff, do you have a presentation?
I'm going to give the building official, mayor, mayor pro town, members of council. In February 2023, the Planning and Zoning Commission established a subcommittee to combine the subdivision and zoning ordinances. At that time, a council appointed three members. Currently, we are short two members, so we would request that those members be appointed.
Fantastic.
I think we nominate the absentee.
I will say, just for a little bit of input, this is, this is a really important, important committee. The text is a lot, it's very dense, but I think that it's, it's prudent for us to go ahead and get people who are really going to be interested in serving on this, because this will shape the way that we go forward with, with development in this community.
Yes.
Any, any takers? And if not, I mean, I know, I know that we
How often do y'all meet?
I'm sorry, what's
How often do y'all meet?
We are, well, we haven't met for a while, because of staff turnover and different things, everything like that. We have a proposed schedule for, like, seven more meetings, and hopefully to bring it back to planning and zoning in July, the first meeting in July. Now, if we can keep that or not, it
Is that once a month, twice a month?
It's actually about every three weeks, two to three weeks, but the subcommittee meeting.
We got to volunteer here.
Volunteer?
Yeah, we need two, though.
If, if, I mean, really, if you're
Every three weeks?
Every three weeks. And if you're, I mean, if you can't do it, we can always push it, because I know we have a few out, but
I have, tentatively, I have some dates here, they're tentative, but I can pass them around so you guys can go ahead and
Yes, sir, thank you.
That helps plan.
No pressure. Really, it's no pressure. I mean, if we, if we need to push this thing out to the next meeting, we could always do that too.
Gary and me, can we
Someone.
Wait till we get more Mr. Savage, and then appoint the next one?
Right. The next meeting, right.
What time, I need to know what time.
That's to be determined. I think we were meeting, we met four, four, four
Maybe four, and, I'm thinking four or 5:30, something like that, I can't quite remember.
I can do it after five. That's all, that's all I can commit to, after five.
I think staff's at the point where we're willing to come in whenever we need to, to get this done.
Now, you know that first date is on, this Friday?
Yes, we would, I would like to.
At 5:30?
We would like to meet at 5:30 on Friday
Okay.
If we can get members appointed. So tomorrow, I'll be sending out emails.
Are these dates, I'm, I'm sorry, let me, I don't mean to hold you up.
I think they're all on Fridays.
They're all on Friday?
I believe so.
Okay.
And we could, those dates can be, those dates could be moved around a little bit, we got a little bit of play there, but it really needs to be prioritized and get this, get this going.
I can meet before five.
We, I don't, I don't know if we had this option in the past, but could we have an option, because I know if we're having a meeting on Friday, could we have a, a virtual option also? I'll be stuck in the airport all day, but
Yes, I think so. I, I think that would be, yeah. IT says we can, we can do
There we go. Fantastic.
How, I'm sorry to ask so many questions, how long is the meeting?
Day range. Couple of them have been pretty fast, couple of them have been longer.
Average?